Count us down? No, okay, so we can just start when we've done that. Okay. All right. Good evening. Today is Thursday, September 15th. For our city council meeting, just by note, City Council President Jim Nash is traveling and out of town tonight. My name is Karen Foster. I'm the City Council Vice President, and I will be presiding over the meeting this evening. And we will begin with a roll call.
Councilor Elkins.
Here.
Councilor Foster.
Here.
Councilor Gore. She's not present, also traveling, I understand. Councilor Jarrett.
Here.
Councilor LaBarge.
Here.
Councilor Maori.
She needs to be a co-host.
Oops, I'm sorry. Okay.
Got it. Yes, here.
Councilor Moulton.
Here.
And Councilor Nash, as we know, is traveling. And Councilor Perry.
Here.
Madam, or Council President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that this meeting and all who are in it are being audio and video recorded. And next up, I want to make an announcement about two upcoming public hearings. First announcement of public hearing on 22.157 National Grid Verizon Poll Petition for Willow Street. Per Mass General Law 166, Section 22, the Northampton City Council will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 6, 2022, at 7:00 PM on National Grid Verizon's petition to install one stub pole on Willow Street. Instructions for accessing the hearing may be found on the October 6, 2022 City Council Agenda to be posted on northhampton.gov no later than 48 hours prior to the meeting. The City Council will hear all persons who wish to be heard therein. And we have another hearing coming up on another poll petition, announcement of public hearing on 22.152 National Grid Poll Petition to relocate one pole and remove another on Holly Street. That hearing will be on Thursday, October 6, 2022, at 7:15 PM on National Grid's petition to relocate one pole, Pole Number 17, and remove one pole, Pole Number 18, on Holly Street. Similar to the other one, instructions for accessing the hearing may be found on the October 6, 2022 City Council Agenda, posted on the city website no later than 48 hours prior to the meeting. The City Council, again, will hear all persons who wish to be heard therein. Which brings us to item four, which is public comment. If you wish to make a public comment, you can use the raised hand feature under the reactions tab, or star nine if you're calling by phone. If you're having trouble raising your hand, you may use the chat feature to let me know that, or I will also be looking for virtual hands. Our meeting's not that big tonight. We will only use the chat feature for technical questions, as it would violate the spirit and potentially the letter of open meeting law to receive public comment privately by chat. If you wish to make a written public comment, you may do so by email at citycouncil@northhamptonma.gov. It would be sent to all's counselors and become a part of the public record. I will invite people to make a comment in the order in which hands are raised. Before you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. Councilor Maori was helping out tonight, and she will unmute you. And to ensure equal access for everyone, council limits comments to two minutes per person. You do not need to use the full two minutes, but if you do, our timer will go off, and I will ask you to finish your thought. If you use the gallery view, you'll be able to see a timer to help you track your time. According to council rules, we do not respond during public comment. It is your turn to speak. While your comments should be directed to us, you will understand when we do not respond. Our rules also state that counselors and members of the public shall conduct themselves with civility and respect at all times. Your speech is protected constitutional right that we ask you to wield with consideration and respect for all. The public space that grants you the freedom to speak is shared equally by everyone. Also, according to open meeting law, if someone is disrupting a public meeting, they may be removed. You may speak any topic. It doesn't need to be on the agenda. I ask that all but the council turn off their video during them until called upon, as only the person recognized has the floor, and all comments will be directed to the council. You can also view this meeting on Channel 15 or by North Hampton Open Media's YouTube channel and other forms. Hand I see is Kena Divigard.
Hello. Thank you very much, and you pronounced it just fine. I'm Christina Divigard. I live on 79 Island Road here in Northampton. And before I begin, I would first like to acknowledge that Northampton was founded and built on unceded homelands of the Nunatac community and other native peoples. And for these lands and the waters of the native nations on which we now reside, I offer my gratitude. I also offer my gratitude to you, our city counselors, and I appreciate the service you bring to our city. So thank you. I'm here today to talk about something that happened on our street on September 2nd. There was extensive personal property that was damaged and destroyed all the way down our street. Trees as far as 15 feet in into private land were uprooted and hacked to shreds. Shrubs and flowers were mowed down, and, you know, these included native species like the wildflower gardens. One of our neighbors diligently tends to. It included a sapling planted right across our street that I thought would always be there to remind me of the neighbor who lived there who passed away a few months earlier. But all of these were destroyed by an employee of the City Department of Public Works. What was destroyed and how seems totally arbitrary, and it extended well beyond any need to address a hazard of any kind. There's no public land on Island Road. Every deed clearly indicates that our property boundaries are at, on, or in Island Road. I have found no documentation of any easements granted to the city beyond the road itself. The question for which I come to you today, which I understand you may not be able to answer, but for which I do seek an answer, is under what ordinance, bylaw code, or statute is the indiscriminate and arbitrary destruction of personal property without prior notice or consent of the property owner allowed? And my closing thought is it just really seems ironic that we live in a city where we make it a priority to plant young trees and, you know, make our city as natural as it can be. And the city's planting trees in some parts of town, but destroying them in others, and it really makes no sense to me. And the question I presented to you at a time that it is appropriate, I would like an answer. But in the meantime, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Christina, and thank you for jumping in. My sun turned on a Netflix show, so I apologize for freezing in that moment. Next up, we have Jackie Balance.
And no, Susan Taberge is next.
Oh, my screen is showing things perhaps in a different order from yours. In my order of hands raised, Jackie, I've got you. Keep me on track. If you're ready, we'll go ahead in that order. So I apologize if that's out of order for others.
Okay, I will. I read the agenda, and there's an ordinance, a letter to the legislature.
Jackie, can you just state your name and city?
Oh, yeah, Jackie Balance Florence. Thank you. I read on the agenda that there's an ordinance written as a, to address the state legislature, to give us home rule to eliminate fossil fuels and new construction. And I want to say that this is a really a big breakthrough for implementing the resilience and regeneration plan. And I hope someone will explain just how it's going to work, because I heard that other communities who asked for home rule are in a queue to get approved by our state legislature that's dragging their feet. I don't know if that's true. Susan may know more about it than I do, but I do support limiting fossil fuels going forward. It's do or die time. Also, I'm also very moved by Christina's story. I hope she gets an answer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. And just so I don't risk calling anybody in an order that you're not expecting, I think my order got out of changed maybe when my screen froze, but I have Denise, and then Susan, then Saul, then Darcy. So give you a second to be prepared. So next up is we have Denise Lalo. If you could say your city, your name and city or town.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just turning on my video so you can see me. My name is Denise Lalo. I live at 35 Woodlawn Avenue in Northampton. And I am also speaking in support of Order 22.173, an order for special legislation relative to fossil fuel-free new construction in the city of Northampton that's being presented by the mayor and counselors Maori and Elkins. I urge the council to support this important petition to the General Court of Massachusetts to allow Northampton to require that all new construction and substantial renovations use electricity for space heating and cooling, water heating, cooking, laundry, and other energy needs. The federal and state government are moving too slowly to address the climate crisis in which we live. This is a health issue as well as a climate issue, since the extraction, transportation, and use of methane exposes vulnerable people, including those with heart disease, asthma, and pregnant persons to negative impacts. I have great admiration for the foresight being shown by local governments such as Berkeley, California, New York City, New York, as well as many smaller municipalities who have already instituted bans on fossil fuel sources of heating and cooling and other uses in new construction. Northampton should join the many communities in eastern Massachusetts, including Boston, Lexington, Newton, Somerville, and others who have already filed or expressed intention to file similar petitions to give us the authority to institute a similar plan. Buildings that are built now will be with us for 50 to 100 years. And retrofitting buildings for electrification is far more costly than using the existing technology to build fossil fuel free now. I'm proud of the mayor and counselors Maori and Elkins and taking the lead on this critical issue, and I hope you'll all support the order. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. And next up, we have Susan Taberge. I said that correctly?
Taberge, but that was very diverse. Thank you so much. Well, I thank you for allowing me to speak, Susan Taberge. I live in Florence, and I am recently here just over about two and a half years, and very happy to be in Northampton. And I, our first two speakers on this issue, Jackie and Denise, were very eloquent. I won't repeat what they have to say, and I would like to thank the first speaker for the land acknowledgement. That was, that was great. So I won't repeat what Denise and Jackie said, just to speak briefly to the fact that I know I don't have to tell anybody in this room that we are in the midst of just cataclysmic changes in our ecosystem and our, the climate disruption that's already hitting us is horrendous. Think of Pakistan right now with that immense flooding is just one example. And this is like dirty polluted water that's turning cities, you know, towns and cities into islands. They're cut off now. Wells are flooded. I mean, you know, this is like just a sort of a snapshot of what's to come. And even though we know we have built in already some major changes, every, to every one tenth of a degree that we can make a difference makes it a little less catastrophic. And so, you know, we're pushing really hard on the state front. We have some good legislation on the federal level, but it is really clear to me and to many others that cities municipalities are absolutely key to really moving this forward. And Northampton is just the city that, that, you know, people are aligned, they're enthusiastic. And we're in a great position to, you know, really request to be one of these. These are the home rule petitions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susan. Next up, we have Darcy.
Hi, I want to echo what Denise, Jackie, and Susan just said.
Darcy, can you just say your name and city or town?
I'm sorry, Darcy Sweeney Florence. I want to thank counselors Maori and Elkins for submitting the home rule petition that would allow Northampton to require that new construction be fossil fuel free. The climate crisis demands that every level of government do everything possible to reduce emissions as rapidly as possible. And this would be a giant step in the right direction. So I hope the counselors will vote in favor of this home rule petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Darcy. And next up, we have Saul.
Saul Perlmutter, Florence. I'd like to thank Counselor Maori, my counselor, and Counselor Elkins for submitting the home rule petition to the legislature to require new construction to be fossil free, fossil fuel free. Moving to require cleanly generated electric energy in new buildings and major renovations is a positive, healthy, common sense step for our city to take. I strongly urge you to please vote in favor of this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Saul. And just looking, I do not see any other raised hands. Looking on both screens. I just want to make sure I catch everybody. Okay, Joyce Rosenfeld.
Hello. Hello.
Hi, Joyce. We can hear you. Can you just, yep.
Yeah, I'm in the dark. I'm so sorry. I'm also calling to support the home rule resolution.
Can you just, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you just say your name and city or town for the record?
I'm sorry, Joyce Rosenfeld. And I live in Florence. And I'm here to support the home rule resolution that has been brought forth tonight and hope that we are in our towns fossil fuel free as soon as possible. This is a good start. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Okay. Looking through the screen one more time. I don't see other hands going once. Okay, then, thank you, everyone, for coming out. And we are going to move on to item five announcements from counselors and the mayor. You know, if you have something, Councilor LaBarge. Oh, you muted, Councilor LaBarge.
Thank you. Just a reminder, we have something very special coming this Saturday, September 17th. The Doosie Do Parade. 11 o'clock AM to be down at the Northampton Center of Arts. You're marching to the Pulaski Park. The Grandish Marshals are Kelsey Flynn and our one and only Bill Joy. As a city counselor, I was going to be in it. And I was going to be the politician again, which I was with Bill Joy and our new mayor, Gina Louie Scher, and also another counselor, but she's on vacation. But what had happened here was I have a very dear resident, Sheila Thompson, who attended Northampton High School with several of my residents and I in Ward 6, and she had passed away. So her memorial service is this Saturday, so I cannot attend that parade. I feel that I have known Sheila and her husband Bill for over 22 years. And being one of my colleagues at Northampton High School was a preference. So, but I did donate, and I sent a check to them for the parade. So I want to wish everybody have a lot of fun, and everybody will have a lot of fun. We're going to see many different types of outfits out there and joy and happiness after two years. Also, too, I want a reminder that to keep in mind on Florence Night Out on Saturday, September 24th, 2022, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, there's arts, music, dance, film, poetry, food, and community. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Are there other one-minute announcements? Counselor Maori.
There we go. Yes, I just wanted to let folks know we're having a special joint council meeting this upcoming Wednesday, 5:00 PM, virtual between the finance committee and the Council Committee on Community Resources to look at the CPA funding of the historic preservation of the facade of the St. Cantius Church. There's a lot of interest in that, so I want to make sure folks don't know about it. You can contact any one of us. The link will be on the city calendar under Wednesday.
Thank you, counselor. Okay, I actually have two mayor, or actually, mayor, why don't you go ahead? No, me? Okay. I will jump in. I've got, I've got two announcements. I just think one of them, mayor, you may share. I wanted to announce that the city's ARPA funds application is open. Was that it? I don't want to steal your thunder. Okay. The application, the city has $4 million in ARPA funds that will be community-directed. Counselor Moulton and I both serve on the commission that is helping to advise this process. The request for proposals is out. Proposals are due October 14th. There's much more information on the city website, and there will be upcoming info sessions to assist interested applicants. Those are coming up Wednesday, September 21st at 6:00 PM in city council chambers. That's a hybrid meeting, so there's also an option to participate remotely, as well as Wednesday, September 28th, the 2:00 PM, also a hybrid meeting in council chambers. So I want to make sure folks knew about that. And then my second announcement, Counselor Elkins, I see your hand as well. There is a vacancy on the Community Preservation Committee, a elected slot on that committee, the individual serving is moving out of Northampton. And so, Northampton City Council, I'll just read the announcement, "Due to resignation, the Northampton City Council is seeking candidates to fill a vacancy in one of the two elected positions on the nine-member Community Preservation Committee." The Community Preservation Committee is responsible for making recommendations for how Community Preservation Act funds are spent in the four CPA program areas, community housing, historic preservation, open space, and recreation. Per charter, vacancies in elected positions on this committee shall be filled by the city council. A person appointed to fill such vacancy shall serve only until a person is elected at the next regular city election and is sworn to the office. Anyone interested is asked to fill out an application for appointment on the city's website by 5:00 PM Thursday, September 29th. Interviews will be conducted by members of the City Services Committee, which will make a recommendation for appointment to the full city council. The city council should act to fill this vacancy at its regular meeting on Thursday, October 20th, 2022. And I realized during that announcement, I said a lot of information that will be coming up later on in the council meeting as well. So we'll flush this out, but wanted to make sure folks know. Oh, good. And Counselor Perry, who has internet problems, you've made it back. Counselor Elkins.
I decided to make this announcement during Counselor Perry's absence. So I'll, maybe I'll be stealing his thunder, but I just wanted to mention that on Monday, Community Resources will be having a meeting. It's regularly scheduled meeting, but we're going to be having a roundtable discussion about the impact of retail marijuana sales on community resources. I'm not sure if I'm looking at the most up-to-date announcement, but we, it's going to be a panel discussion with community-based agencies and industry representatives to learn how the growing number of marijuana retailers in Northampton has impacted business prevention and recovery services and young people's attitudes toward cannabis and actual cannibal cannabis use, not cannibal. Participants thus far, and I'm not sure if all of these are 100% lined up, but like I said, it's the most up-to-date, but participants thus far will include Susan Stubbs, President and CEO of ServiceNet, Heather Warner, Manager, Strategic Partner, Strategic Cleaning Initiative for Families and Youth, SPIFI, the SPIFI Coalition for Collaborative Educational Services, and Carolyn Johnson, SPIFI's Public Health and Data Evaluation Specialist Lawyer and Cannabis Consultant Ezra Harzibook and Vulcan Polito, an owner of Molina's Restaurant and Honey Dispensary. There's going to be a couple of brief presentations and then followed by questions and answers and an opportunity for public comment. So we know this is something that folks are interested in talking about, and we've put together an exciting and interesting and informative group of folks to talk about the issue in Community Resources meeting on Monday.
Thank you, Counselor Elkins. And I'll jump in with a third announcement, because I can tonight. October 3rd, the City Council Committee on City Services will be hosting a similar discussion, but from City Services. So we're still putting that agenda together, but we'll be inviting relevant city department heads to come and speak at that meeting as well, which I realize happens before our next council meeting. So wanted folks to know that's Monday, October 3rd at 4:30 PM. Now, mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, counselors. It's great to be with you, and thank you for all of those announcements. Yes, thank you so much, Vice President Foster, for sharing the information about both items, but particularly about the ARPA Community Recovery Application that is now open. I'm really grateful for you sharing that. And I, and I really, I ask all counselors to please share that as far and as wide as you can. We want everyone to know that these community recovery funds are available and to, if, if they have something that they would like to seek them for, to please, please apply. And thank you to the counselors who are serving on that committee. I know how hard you are working. I'm very grateful. So I do, I have a sort of a brief communication that I'd like to share about something that's on your consent agenda, but I wanted to take this opportunity. I haven't yet had an opportunity to speak to my appointment of Carolyn Mish as Director of Planning and Sustainability. So if you'll indulge me, I just wanted to speak briefly on that appointment and to Carolyn's remarkable qualifications. Sorry, it's very loud where I am, qualifications, experience, and her dedication to Northampton. Carolyn's experience and knowledge, having served Northampton for 22 years, is of course invaluable. But as important to me is her vision and her plans for community engagement, her commitment to sustainability and climate change resilience, her commitment to not just following, but revising and keeping active the Sustainable Northampton Plan and its embedded plans, and her enthusiasm to keep pushing to think really creatively about how to create affordable housing. So I'm very I'm very proud and excited to put forward this appointment. I want to also really thank the screening committee who worked on on this appointment and including the two counselors who sat on it, counselors Jarrett and Elkins. That screening committee very carefully reviewed the applications we received from casting a very wide net search and interviewed finalists and then unanimously, and I'll say enthusiastically, put forward Director Mish as their recommendation. I fully agreed with them and was very happy to offer her the position. And I can say that it's been an extremely busy summer and Carolyn has very beautifully transitioned into the interim role when Wayne Fiden left and then to the appointed role of director. So I'm extremely proud to work with Carolyn and I am so grateful to have a professional of her caliber taking over as Director of Planning and Sustainability. But additionally, I am grateful to work with such a fine, thoughtful person who cares so deeply about her community and our larger world and has dedicated her career to making it better, safer, greener, and more accessible for all. So I thank the council very much for your careful consideration of her appointment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Other councillors, any announcements? Okay. Mayor, did you have a presentation for us tonight? I didn't see anything there, but.
I do not, thank you.
Okay, then what, before we move on to the consent agenda that we now know is coming, I'm going to call a five-minute recess so I can put myself back together in my new spot where I have better internet. So it's 7:31 now and we'll reconvene at 7:36. Is back. Liz, are you all set if we resume? Okay. So next up, we are at item, thank you everybody for that brief pause. I feel like I have all my things together now. We are on item seven, the consent agenda. As a reminder that there shall be no debate or discussion by any city councillor regarding any item on the consent agenda beyond asking questions for simple clarification. But if you have any removals after I read the items on the consent agenda, you're welcome to request a removal to allow for debate or questioning. So the consent agenda includes item A, the September 1st, 2022 minutes, B, 22.160, appointments to various committees, all positive recommendations from the City Services Committee on September 6th, 2022. For the Board of Assessors, we have Sean Sullivan, term August 2022 to June 2025 to fill a vacancy. For the Board of Health, Janet Grant, term August 22 to June 2025, and that is to fill a vacancy. To the Community Preservation Committee, Beverly Bates, term August 2022 to June 2025, as the Housing Partnership Representative. Historical Commission, Greg DeBrindisi, term August 2022 to June 2025, as the Realtor representative from the Realtor Association of the Pioneer Valley. For the Human Rights Commission, Diana Stallone, term August 2022 to June 2025 to fill a vacancy. And Angela DeSouza, term August 2022 to June 2025, also to fill a vacancy. And to the Parks and Rec Commission, Thomas Dunphy, term July 2022 to June 2025. That is a reappointment. Item C, 22.162, the appointment of Carolyn Mish as Director of Office of Planning and Sustainability, that received a positive recommendation from the City Services Committee on September 6th, 2022. Item D, 22.166, in order to suspend parking fees on certain days in second reading. That was referred to the consent agenda at our last meeting. And item E, 22.174, appointment to fill vacancy in elected position on Community Preservation Committee for referral to City Services. I'll read the process note here. Per chapter, section 54, whenever vacancy occurs on the Community Preservation Committee, the city council shall within 30 days following the date of that vacancy act to fill the vacancy. A person appointed to fill a vacancy by the city council shall serve only until a person is elected at the next regular city election and is sworn to the office. So that, those are the items on our consent agenda. Are there any removals? Councillor Moulton?
Request removal of item C, the appointment of Carolyn Mish.
Okay. Are there any other removals? I am going to request the removal of item E, 22.174, appointment to fill vacancy in the elected position on Community Preservation Committee. Hi. Which brings us back to the consent agenda with item C, the appointment of Carolyn Mish, and item E, the appointment to fill the vacancy removed. So we'll be voting on the consent agenda minus those two removals. Laura, can you take a roll call, please?
We need a motion and a second.
Move proof?
Second.
Agenda?
Second.
Okay. Councillor Elkins?
Yes.
Councillor Foster?
Yes.
Councillor Jarrod?
Yes.
Councillor Labarge?
Yes.
Councillor Mayory?
Yes.
Councillor Moulton?
Yes.
Councillor Perry?
Yes.
I think there was another yes there and it was a bark.
Okay, so that, did we get everybody, Laura?
Yes.
Okay, we did. And the bark. Okay. Thank you. So that passes. And then removal, we had item C, 22.162, the appointment of Carolyn Mish. Councillor Moulton, did you want to speak to that?
Thank you. I asked for removal so that I could speak in favor of the appointment of Carolyn Mish. I think that it's sound management practice. When we have a strong internal candidate, particularly for a job as important as Director of Planning and Sustainability, to promote from within, I think it, not only do we retain the skills and institutional knowledge of that person, but it also sends a positive, it boosts morale by sending a positive message, not only to that department, but other city employees that the city recognizes and rewards excellent work. At the same time, even when we have a strong internal candidate, I think it's a good practice to measure that person against the unknown, against others who might be out there, who might want to apply or be attracted to a job like this and might be a good fit. That happened, of course, in this case, as the mayor mentioned. There were three finalists who were interviewed and one of those was a person from outside of Massachusetts. So Carolyn Mish received not only the unanimous endorsement of the screening committee, that included a couple of my colleagues from the council, other municipal officials and community members, but also, of course, the positive recommendation from City Services, which is no surprise, given her 22 years in Northampton and her deep knowledge of the planning process and the community's values and goals here, as well as her prior experience as a municipal planner in North Carolina and a state planner in Colorado. But I've had the opportunity over the last eight and a half months, the city councillor, to observe and work with Director Mish. And she's communicated clearly with me about often complex issues in a way that is understandable. And she has been responsive to my questions and as importantly, to questions from my constituents. And my observation during that period is that she has not only the vision that the mayor mentioned, but also a deep commitment to community engagement. And for all of those reasons, my vote in favor of her will be cast enthusiastically and I look forward to working with her in the coming months as she leads the Planning Department in Northampton.
Okay, so I'd be looking for a motion. Oh, Councillor Elkins?
As long as this item has been removed, I also would like to just briefly speak favorably to soon-to-be Director Mish, not just interim director. I've worked with Carolyn on the Planning Board during my tenure on that body. And of course, that is a fully volunteer body and learned so much, both in terms of procedure of how those meetings are to be run to fulfill the obligations that that particular body has and also just tremendous amounts that I learned regarding the direction of our policies in terms of sustainability and city planning and zoning and zoning reform, which in turn turned into a significant reason why I ran to serve on city council because of what I learned in that role from Carolyn and her predecessor Wayne and what I found so rewarding about doing service alongside public servants like Carolyn. So I have found her to be incredibly informative and clear and concise and deeply knowledgeable and passionate about our city. And so I'm gonna be delighted to cast my vote tonight and so that she will be with us and serving the city for many years to come.
Thank you, Councillor Elkins. Did anybody else wish to speak? Okay, then I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to approve Carolyn Mish as Director of Planning and Sustainability. Second.
Okay, and Laura, roll call?
Councillor Foster?
Yes.
Councillor Jarrod?
Yes.
Councillor Labarge?
Yes.
Councillor Mayory?
Yes.
Councillor Moulton?
Yes.
Councillor Perry?
Yes.
And Councillor Elkins?
Yes.
So that passes seven to nothing. And then the next item off for removal, I took it off, so I'll just explain why is item E, 22.174, appointment to fill vacancy in elected position on Community Preservation Committee for referral to City Services. Right now, was on the consent agenda is just a referral to City Services. I just wanted to name that later on in the agenda, we'll be seeing ordinance that sort of instructs how city council will go about filling this vacancy. So just wanted to explain what that was. So if there's any questions, if not, I'll take a motion on that one.
Move to approve? Second. Item E?
Okay, councillor made, moved by councillor Mayory, seconded by councillor Elkins. And Laura, we can do a roll call on that. You're muted, Laura. Thanks.
Okay. Councillor Jarrod?
Yes.
Councillor Labarge?
Yes.
Councillor Mayory?
Yes.
Councillor Moulton?
Yes.
Councillor Perry?
Yes.
Councillor Elkins?
Yes.
And Councillor Foster?
Yes. Okay, so that passes seven to zero, which brings us up to item eight, financial orders on first reading. Item A is 22.170, in order authorizing expenditures for accessible parking fines. Again, this is first reading. And Keith, I believe you are here to speak to that.
Yes, thank you all. So this is, this issue was. Yes, thank you all. So this is, this issue was really raised. By resident of the new South Street Apartments, I believe it's twenty two to thirty four New South Street. It's a apartment complex. There's eighteen units there.
Oh, Keith, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is the financial order authorizing expenditures. I think we'll get to the New South Street later on. Thank you.
My apologies. Yes, so. Last year, two years ago, city council. By request, the disability commission authorized the use, I believe, councillor Labarge. She was instrumental in this, but to take the fines for people parking in accessible parking spaces. To use that money. To pay for. Assisted listening, excuse me, translation services at meetings. This order would. Now include paying the architectural and design fees to implement the ADA transition plan. And it's really just for one project. Kind of that came out of the transition plan and that is to. Make City Hall municipal building and the. Where DPW is that building accessible. There's several doors, several of the service windows that are not compliant with the ADA. And there's a a grant through the state that we will, I would like to apply at the end of the month. So I've got a cost estimate from. A designer that would, I can now use that to apply for the grant. But the grant does not pay for the design, so the hard costs, the labor to implement it. Will be paid for by the grant if we get it, but this money. This authorization would pay for the design so that we can just and it'd be about. Twelve percent of that, so it might be in the ten to fifteen thousand dollar range. And that is going to pull from the revolving fund, which is around, the balance is around thirty five to forty thousand right now. Currently, we only use that for getting translation services for people requests at city meetings. And right now, we're only using that. I've, since I've been the coordinator, we've only had one, one person at the disability commission kind of on a recurring basis ask for that. And that's, we're paying an hourly hourly rate of translator for about hundred five dollars, so we're not in kind of any. We're not in danger of extinguishing that fund for a while and it seems to repeat. Unfortunately, it seems to be replenishing quite frequently, so. I hope I did explain that well, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. It looks like councillor Labarge and then councillor Jarrett.
Thank you. We we had Nathan Chang who filled in for Keith, which he knows. And we had a lengthy talk about this order. And it's absolutely necessary. There's no question about it. We were able to find out exactly how much we had in our account. I think it was that forty thousand, correct, Keith? Right. Anyways, there was great concerns and I had great concerns too, because at that point. Carolyn Mish really wasn't sure what that price was going to be. And the Commission on Disabilities, when I went to have that order put in place, we had no money, no money at all. So another councillor and I, councillor Eugene Tacey, at that point from Ward Seven. Really stepped in and him and I designed an ordinance with Mayor Narcoits to make it happen. We opened the doors because we had no money, no money at all. So our concerns is, we definitely, and I told the commission, how important that no matter what. We need to open the doors and we need to move on and improve this. Once we find out how much that money is going to be. If it's going to be fifteen or twenty thousand, that's fine. If we go over that, we need to have some money in that account. So that we can do what we want to do with the Commission on Disabilities. There's many other things that we're looking at. So anyways, I highly agree of approving this order. It is absolutely necessary so we can open the doors, so Keith can move on and we can make this happen. So thank you, councillors.
Thank you, councillor Labarge. Councillor Jarrett, you had your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry if I missed this, but do we have a sense of, you know, like how much each year we we take in in? In the fines?
I can get that number for you, but I believe Charlene would would have a better sense of that, but. Even since the last time I checked it a few months ago, it's gone up a few thousand dollars. Yeah.
We can get that number for you, councillors. Charlene's not here this evening because she has an exciting family event coming up this weekend, but. I can, we can get that and get it to you.
Appreciate that because Carolyn mentioned something about forty thousand in it right now.
Other councillors' questions? Okay, I have, I have one, maybe without Charlene here, we don't know. What what is the fine for parking in accessible spot?
Hundred.
Hundred?
Yeah. I'd like to see it go up higher.
Hey, that is a.
I know, I mean, we've done so much. We've done so much with the money that we have in there, the new audio. You know, equipment for people with hard of hearing and so forth, we're coming a long way. The Braille, that was a biggie of having Braille in some of the restaurants here in the city of Northampton. And working with one of the owners of. The restaurant on Strong Avenue, East Side Grill. And if it wasn't for Daniel Couso, he was so helpful going out to restaurants and getting support to make it happen for us. So the money's there. We use it very carefully for people with disabilities.
Okay, Keith, I I just have, oh, go ahead. Did you want to respond?
No, I just. Just want to thank the mayor for, it was kind of this very last minute on us, on me and writing it. And she's come off vacation and I was bugging Carolyn to get this in for the mayor. So she's very happy to look it over and there's the enthusiastic say yes. And then disability commission, I was not there, but they were. They were already on board with it, so just want to thank them for that.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm I'm thrilled to support this and that the fines will be used this way.
Keith, I wanted to check with you. I didn't see a note on the agenda, but you mentioned your grant deadline being the end of the month. Is this? Is there a time urgency or are we okay if?
No, no, it's it's totally fine. The more urgent part was me getting the actual. Cost. From the. Cost estimator. So it's at sixty nine, or I'm sorry, fifty nine thousand dollars. It might go up a little bit, but average, it's twelve percent of that, ten to twelve percent of that, so you're looking at seven thousand dollars. If it doesn't go up dramatically, so that would be, that seven thousand dollars would be drawn from the revolving fund. But I just need that number to put in the grant and to say these are kind of our line items. And I I our scope of work, you know, is for offices and this amount of check, this amount of doors and things like that, so. But if if I feel confident that you guys will support this, then I'm going to apply.
Okay, councillors, any other questions? Okay, I'm just going to jump in real quick to say this is a really exciting financial order. I'm really glad. To see this in the city's focus and the potential to make the DPW facilities and and City Hall accessible to people with disabilities. There's nothing that says more to our, everybody in our community that they belong than being able to access the spaces where things happen. So it's, it's really important and I'm really glad to see this. So council, we have a decision to make about whether this goes to the consent agenda or the finance committee. Councillor. Councillor Labarge?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to move this to the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, so motion made by councillor Labarge and seconded by councillor Molton. Laura, can we get a roll call and referral of this order to the consent agenda for the next meeting?
Sure. Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Molton.
Yes.
Councillor Perry.
Yes.
Councillor Elkins.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
And councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passes seven to nothing. Which brings us to item B, financial order on first reading, in order to reprogram funds to purchase a scanner printer. I had, I I see that Charlene isn't here, but mayor, did you want to speak to this one?
I absolutely do want to speak to this one. Well, let me pull it up. So this may be an instance where sort of. The wacky market and supply chain issues have worked in our favor. So you may remember from the capital improvement plan, the building department was replacing this year a twenty. An older twenty thirteen. Subaru, gas powered, fully gas powered Subaru with a a hybrid vehicle. And when they were able to actually secure the hybrid vehicle, which is not easy right now. But in doing so and trading in the Subaru, we actually got a great deal more for the Subaru than we expected. Because as you may know, the. The used car market is incredibly hot right now. So we have some, a balance of money remaining that the building department would very much like to use. To purchase a scanner printer for oversized plans and maps. And so. They produce a lot of these plans, but also there are certain documents that we must retain. And as you can imagine, they take up a lot of room and we have been looking at a way to digitize those. To send them out to be digitized would cost significantly more than purchasing this print, this scanner. Which we then could keep using for plans going forward. So they would like to reprogram these funds to purchase a scanner. That will greatly help them with the pile, the stacks and piles of these plans that are now all over the place and be, will be able to retain these records digitally. So that is that kind of happy story about those funds.
Thank you, mayor. Councillor, any questions or councillors, any questions about this one? Councillor Labarge?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to move this to the consent agenda. This is extremely important in order to do what they have to do with a large maps and oversight plans.
Second.
Okay, motion made by councillor Labarge, seconded by councillor Jarrett. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, Laura, can we get a roll call on referral to the consent agenda for the next meeting?
Sure. Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Molton.
Yes.
Councillor Perry.
Yes.
Councillor Elkins.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
And councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passes seven to zero. We do not have any financial orders on second reading, which brings us to section ten, orders. First up, we have order twenty two point one seven three, in order for special legislation relative. To fossil fuel free new construction in the city of Northampton on first reading. And I would like to invite these sponsors to discuss this or to introduce it.
Councillor Mayori, I'll let you go first if you want, unless you want me to go first.
Go for it, councillor Elkins.
So this was. So this is a home rule petition. You know, we've, we of course don't have the ability to, as a city, to. To just change the building codes in this way so that we're, this is essentially a request of state to allow us to be able to make this change. We, and should this pass and it go on to this, to the state level. We will be joining the ranks of several, several other municipalities who have made several similar home rule petition requests. It's of vital importance for us to make a significant commitment to 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 demonstrate. I'm sorry, let me start over again. It's very important that we that we demonstrate our commitment to meeting our climate goals, our sustainability goals. That were put forth not only in the energy and sustainability plan, but also I think every single one of us in here and and the mayor all have. Voiced even higher aspirations and and urgency to what we need to do. And this is incredibly important movement that we need to make and we're doing it in the midst of a housing crisis, of course. So. While the realities of home rule petitions and how those things go at the state level means it could be that that. It it could be a a difficult point of persuasion to have this pass at the state level. By joining the ranks of other municipalities who are doing this, I I think we sent an important message to Boston. To say that we're, cities like Northampton are ready and are ready to make the commitment, ready to to to. To stand firm to do, to make the hard changes that we need to do. So I think that's incredibly important. It's just something that I, folks have been talking to me about and councillor Mayori about. I think for quite a long time, we've been talking about it in the Energy and Sustainability Committee. I also would like to do a shout out. She's traveling, so she's not able to be here today, but Adele Franks on the, who is also on the sustainability. NESC was, has been incredibly vital in helping draft this. This home rule petition and also keeping us educated and informed on the status of other municipalities, home rule petitions. And also other initiatives happening at state level that that may well get the whole state here. So the best case scenario might be that this home rule petition ultimately doesn't pass or come back to us in this form. Because we're doing it at the state level, because everybody as a state. As a common, in the Commonwealth, that we're we're making this commitment and that we are being leaders. By by joining this movement and and the impressing upon the folks in Boston, the moral imperative. That is how we meet this moment. So I'm very proud and happy to be co sponsoring this with councillor Mary.
Councillor Mary.
Well said. Thank you, councillor Elkins. Yeah, this is, this is the kind of fundamental change and shift. That we've been talking about for a while in Northampton. But also, as you said, councillor Elkins, it's also a great model for what we should be doing at every level. And to that, and I believe the Boston City Council passed a similar ordinance ordinance this week. So I think, as you say, councillor Elkins, I think, you know, there's a. It could be a growing momentum with this that that could lead to, you know, the fundamental changes at the state level, which I'm very excited about. And the mayor, as you know, with the home rule petition, we need to have the mayor on board. The mayor is here, she can certainly speak to it. Maybe I'll tell her.
Thank you, councillor. Sorry, councillor.
Briefly, I I also, I want to add just one more thing before the mayor speaks in, which is to say. I do also want to emphasize that that no matter what the sort of realities or the difficulty as a procedural matter, getting home rule petition through. I want to make it really clear that by being clear-eyed about that, that we are ready to go and fight for this. And that whatever it takes, when it comes time to go to Boston and to talk to our legislators, that we absolutely have the leader, that we here have the leadership in in. On Beacon Hill, I I think, to make this case and we're prepared to do that and that's part of this process. And as a advocate, I'm really excited about that part of it.
Um, great. Thanks to both councillors Elkins and Mayori, Elkins and Mayori for. for bringing this forward with me. I'm very thrilled to, to work on this with you. And if this passes this evening, which I'm, I'm confident and hopeful that it will, then working together to craft an ordinance that we would then send forward. So as you know, this is one of my top priorities and I'm, I'm just grateful to the two of you for helping push us forward in this way. And, and you know, both creating housing and sustainability are two of the most important things that, that we're working on in this moment. So thank you both. And, and I totally agree with you, Counselor Elkins, that we will, we will be ready to support this and have a lot of wind, but of course, you know, we heard people at public comment tonight, there is a huge, our community is so behind this and will, I think, dazzle or awe the legislature when this goes forward and will be very prepared to, to say how important it is for our community and of course for the Commonwealth. So thank you both very, very much for this.
Great. I do see hands up. I just wanted a quick clarification so that there's, there's not any panic tonight. This, tonight's the introduction, right? And we would be voting on the order at our meeting in October. Just to be.
Yes. And then, then the, the actual language would need to be crafted.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So I will go back to those hands I saw. Counselor Jarrett.
Thank you. Yeah. So there was interest in this back when I was on the Energy and Sustainability Commission. And I'm really happy to see the new members of that commission moving this forward. And I believe there's also an opportunity for 10 pilot communities to do this. And I think passing this solidifies our interest both in that and in a more permanent requirement. And you know, the order states that all electric technology and net zero carbon building capability exists today is feasible and is cost effective. And so that's, that's an essential part of this is that we can do this and it doesn't cost more than other options that are available to people in Northampton. And on, so that's, it's, it's just a wonderful benefit from both, both perspectives of, of cost and climate. So I'm looking forward to this. And I did have a question. So did the Energy and Sustainability Commission already endorse this? It wasn't sponsored, it doesn't say it's sponsored by them as well, or, but um, do they need to endorse it in any way?
I don't know if they, if we need to, but sorry, Rachel. I, I don't know that, I don't know that we need to, but it was definitely a product of, of, of those meetings and, and those discussions. So I guess unless it's, I guess it could be referred out to that, but I don't, I mean, I don't. I don't know that I see a need to, just in the sense that it's, would clearly be supported and maybe redundant of other work we've already done, whether we put the official stamp on it or not.
Right. Yeah. So it's clear, it's clear that they, this is a product of that, that commission. So that, that sounds great. I don't think we need to refer back to them then, since you've already discussed it there, probably consider it.
Counselor Mary, did you want to respond? It looked like you might have.
Oh, yeah. Just to say that we did, we did, we did meet and, and it was overwhelmingly, it was unanimously positive. I'm just trying to remember, Counsel Office, we actually voted. We, we had the conversation about endorsing. Everyone said how wonderful it was and I just don't remember if we actually voted. But yes, I think, I think we were vetted certainly by, by NESC and, and it, and initially by Solicitor Seawald as well. And then, so yeah, so I'm feeling confident that, yes, the NESC is behind this on this.
And, and there were some substantive edits and changes to sort of what we originally discussed. So we did substantive work on it already. I don't think it needs to go back unless there's some reason it does.
Counselor La Barge, I see your hand, but I realized that I omitted something that I think is really important at the beginning of this discussion. There's some incredibly powerful and strong language in this order. And I actually would like to invite the sponsors to read this. I, I think, I know we've all read it ahead of time, but to have a chance to read it as, as a bit more framing of our discussion. And then Counselor La Barge, after that, I will go to you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for your patience.
Do you want, want me to speak now?
No, we're, we're going to have the sponsors read this. I would say real quick, it's not that quick, but I, I think it's, I think this is one worth reading into the record.
Do you, do you want to go?
Why don't, why don't, uh, why we, I'll stop halfway and then you take.
Okay, when you stop, I'll start.
Hand you the ton. It feels good to do that. Okay. And an order for special legislation relative to fossil fuel free new construction in the city of Northampton ordered that. Whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has a legally binding statewide requirement of 100% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from 1990 levels by 2050 and 50% by 2030. Whereas Northampton has committed to a goal of net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. And whereas, when in the, in its latest 2022 report, the UN Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change forcefully stated without immediate and deep emissions reductions across sectors, limiting global warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius is beyond reach, excuse me. Whereas addressing climate change requires a just transition from fossil fuels to a decarbonized economy that is sustainable and equitable. Whereas building emissions represent over 40% of greenhouse gas emissions in the Commonwealth and over 70% of greenhouse gas emissions in the state's urban areas. And therefore achieving the Commonwealth's mandatory greenhouse gas emissions target will require building decarbonization. Whereas a natural gas and propane are dangerous fossil fuels that generate indoor and outdoor air pollution, leak explosive gas from aging infrastructure and put the health and safety of Commonwealth's current and future citizens at risk. The ton over, Counselor Elkins?
Whereas methane leaks from gas production and transportation via pipelines cause significant, cause significant environmental damage and contribute to climate disruption. Whereas gas stoves produce harmful indoor emissions, including nitrogen dioxide, carbon monoxide and formaldehyde, each of which can cause various respiratory and other health ailments. And cooking with, and cooking with gas has been linked to asthma and other adverse health effects with children in low income households particularly affected. Data show that children have a 42% increased rate of asthma. Whereas all electric technology and net zero carbon building capability exists today is feasible and is cost effective. Whereas the availability of renewable energy is growing and mandated to continue to grow. Whereas under current regulations, towns and cities in Massachusetts do not have the authority to adopt building codes and regulations, including those that would allow elimination of fossil fuels from our buildings and meet our legally binding emission targets. Now, therefore, be it ordered, voted to petition the general court to the end, to the end, that legislation be adopted precisely as follows. The general court may make, I'm going to skip over that. I'm going to skip past the pro forma language to, do you want me to read the whole thing? The, all the way through?
No, I'll, I'll defer to your judgment on that.
Just one second. I, I think no, I think the whereas is the, is the, the overarching big picture language. So unless, unless Counsel Foster, you want me to?
No, I support that. Thank you. The whereas clause is what I, I felt were important to, to include.
Thank you so much, Vice President Foster. That was, that felt good to do.
Thank you both. Thank you for indulging my step backwards there. Counselor La Barge, you've waited so long.
Thank you. I have to agree that there's a lot of powerful language in this home rule. And I'm really concerned because I'm hoping that we can move this along. And I think hearing about Boston, how they have already done something like this is critical, critical. We've been hearing this for how long of climate change? Of going into moving quickly, and I'm very happy to see this. I have great concerns about the natural gas, the propane, how dangerous it is and so forth. And also with our children, the, the health conditions that happen with all this that's written in here. I want to thank Adele Frank. I think she's an inspiration to that commission. And I want to thank her for helping the two counselors with the language on this. So hearing if any reason, for any reason was the committee supporting this. They had somebody who's been working on this type for a long time, very knowledgeable with it. And we heard tonight, some of the residents speak about moving this. So I want to thank both of the counselors and the mayor for doing this and let's hope we can move it on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor La Barge. Other counselors? Okay, then I'll just weigh in quickly. One to say, after the introduction of an order or resolution, it always feels a little bit anticlimactic to me, how we, how we move on without a vote. But I do want to thank you, thank the co-sponsors very much for your work and for bringing this forward to council. And I'm excited to support this and to do what we might need to do on the local level to help move this through. You know, so that, so that this becomes an option for us in Northampton. So thank you very much for your work on this. And that is going to bring us to item 11, ordinances not yet referred. Go ahead and pull this up and read this one as well. It's just so we have a chance in the council to talk about it. Laura, if you could share your screen. 22.171, ordinance establishing procedures for filling vacancies in elected positions on the Community Preservation Committee. Whereas the Home Rule Charter for the city of Northampton provides that the city council shall fill a vacancy on the Community Preservation Committee pursuant to the process and procedures set forth by ordinance. Now, therefore, ordered that, the code of ordinances of the city of Northampton shall be amended by amending section 22.2F as follows. F, should there be a vacancy or resignation in any of the Community Preservation Committee positions? The commission's boards or authorities who have appointment authority under this article shall appoint a new representative within 45 days of the first date of vacancy or resignation. Otherwise said vacancy may be filled by the city council. Should there be a vacancy in one of the two elected positions, such vacancy shall be filled as follows until the next regular city election. One, the vacant position shall be advertised in a manner that the president of the council deems likely to attract a diverse pool of qualified candidates. Two, the vacancy shall appear on the agenda for a city council meeting within 30 days of the vacancy. Three, the city council may vote on such vacancy. Or it may refer the matter to a council committee for a recommendation as to the filling of the vacancy. And four, the vacancy shall be filled by a person eligible to vote in the city of Northampton, no later than 60 days of the vacancy. I'm just going to, I, I worked with Attorney Seawald and Laura quite a bit over the last week to bring this forward. I'm grateful to both of them for their eagle eyes and languaging to make this happen. I just wanted to give a little bit of backstory and then we can, we can discuss. So when one of the two elected positions, the person is resigning because they're moving out of the city of Northampton, under our charter, it's a city council responsibility to fill that vacancy. We tried to make the language on this, so we need to do that by ordinance. It's now on the council agenda, so we're meeting that requirement. We tried to make this as relatively simple as possible. And part of the reason for that is that right now we have the select committee, the city council select committee that Counselor Perry and Counselor Gore are serving on to help reduce barriers to service. And so we wanted something that was relatively simple that if there were to be another vacancy in the future, would be relatively easy to change our process in order to incorporate recommendations that might come out of that select committee. So as this reads right now, we'll advertise, we'll use the city application through the mayor's office, you know, to advertise and the committee on city services will then take the applications, conduct interviews if necessary and make a recommendation back to the full council. But I just kind of wanted to explain that piece of the thinking is that this is a very tight turnaround, but there's space in the way that this is written to approach it a little bit differently in the future, which is one of the stated goals of our council. And so I would entertain, I don't know if I made that clear or less clear, but happy to take questions. Counselor Walton?
Yes, Counsel Foster, thank you for that explanation, which I think was, was very clear. In fact, this ordinance is the, the piece that was required by the Charter Review Committee when we did a lot of housekeeping three years ago on the filling of vacancies, including the CPC. And I, I think, as you explained, that this could be, the ordinance is pretty straightforward now and it could be adjusted after the, the committee on, on looking at the barriers to participation issues, its report. The only, the only other thing I would point out is that this mechanism of having the city council fill the vacancy of one of the two elected positions occurs only in, only in those situations where there's not another regular city election within 120 days. So if this were happening next year, we would wait until the, the regular city election.
Thank you for that clarification, Counselor. Other counselors? Okay, so in it, in addition to, well, we have this on the agenda for referral. So we just need to determine as a council where the ordinance is going to be referred before we see this, see this back as, as well as a process for filling the position. Counselor Jarrett?
A little bit, we refer this to legislative matters?
Okay, is there a second on that?
I'll, I'll second it. There's some time time considerations for this, correct?
Yes, there is a time consideration. So the vacancy is on, was, is on the agenda within the 30 days. We need to do the appointment within 45 days, so that would be by mid-October. Will that work with the legislative matters agenda to move that, to move that through there in that timeframe? Counselor Jarrett?
We meet next for legislative matters on October, Monday, October 3rd. So we should then be able to make our recommendation and vote on the ordinance on the 6th.
Okay. Great. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for referral to legislative matters. Any discussion on that? Okay, Laura, can we do a roll call, please?
Counselor Walton.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor La Barge.
Yes.
And Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passed, passes seven to zero for referral?
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Apologize for interrupting. I, can we go back to the, the home rule petition? It occurs to me that we, we did first reading, but we did not refer it anywhere or, or send it to the consent agenda, which I think we need to do, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Um, I think orders typically, don't they appear for a second vote? Although, yeah, let's hop back. We do have the option, we could refer it. And I guess I didn't ask for that.
Well, I guess if, if we don't do one or the other, does it just come up at the second reading for a vote without any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't need to refer it.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure I, if it needed to be referred one way or the other.
Thank you. I was questioning that too.
Yes.
Okay, thank.
Laura, that's correct, right?
You, because.
Right. According to council rules.
Writing an ordinance.
Okay. Learn something new every day.
But let me make sure our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed. Do any counselors want to make a referral of that order? Okay, so we'll see it again at our October, at our next meeting. I know it feels very, very strange, like something major is hanging in the air. But I promise we'll see it again. Um, but I promise we'll see it again and get to vote on it.
Okay. That's fine. I just wanted to make, make sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay. So that's going to bring us up. How's everybody doing? Are you all okay to keep going here?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. I see lots of thumbs up. That brings us up to item 12. Um, Keith, this is gonna be your moment. A 22.163, an ordinance relative to parking on New South Street. Um, this is in second reading. Um, and this received a positive recommendation from Legislative Matters. Keith, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you. Uh, thank you for hearing me a second time today. Um, yeah. So, um, a resident at New South Street Apartments, uh, which is right behind the Academy of Music on the same set of street there. Um, there is no parking, uh, on that side of the street whatsoever. And on New South Street, um, on the whole, there is no accessible parking. And we do have, um, uh, at least three individuals with mobility impairments, uh, who use mobility devices or other, um, who live in those apartments. And we just, uh, gave, uh, the city just gave, uh, two years ago, uh, $83,000 in CBG money to rehab some of those buildings and bring them up. Uh, um, making a little better living situation, but also kind of, uh, increased accessibility. Um, and so right now, those residents there don't have, uh, uh, good accessible parking. There is plenty of accessible parking spaces in the Roundhouse Parking Lot, but now you're asking the person to go from the parking lot and then up the back, uh, the plastic park. Um, so, uh, this was, uh, brought to the Transportation Park Committee, Commission. Uh, they looked it over and they, they approved it. Uh, but, um, after we've kind of, I, I kind of looked at this and, um, did further analysis on the accessible parking in, in the city, and we are out of compliance, uh, this will not get us there completely. Um, but I'm working with, uh, DPW, uh, right now, the Parking Commission to fix that. So in the next few months, I hope to be back here with, uh, full picture of that. Uh, but this will help us with that as well.
Thank you, Keith. Um, counselors, any questions?
No.
Or comments on this? Uh, Counselor Jarrett?
Uh, move approval?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Jarrett and seconded by, I missed it, was it you, Counselor Mary?
No, it's I.
It was you, Counselor LaBarge. Okay. I, I see now how hard it is to know that. Um, okay. And any further discussion? Okay. So, um, Laura, if we could take a roll call, please?
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Elkins?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
And Counselor Moulton?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That, that motion passes seven to zero. And that brings us up to, thank you, Keith. B 22.164, an ordinance relative to parking on State Street. We're here in second meeting on that one. Let's pull that up. Um, in history, that was referred to Legislative Matters and we see the positive recommendation from Legislative Matters. Um, I'm realizing that that's not live linked on the agenda. I think that was a, um, but, uh, did anybody, I, I don't know, Mayor, if you wanted to speak to that, we, we've had a, a chance to speak to it. Legislative Matters also made a, a recommendation. Okay. Counselor Jarrett?
I'm happy to speak to it.
That'd be great. Thank you.
The mayor does. Um, so, uh, there, this is, I don't know if, if Laura, if you're able to find the, the map that goes with this.
Let me look under the Legislative Matters agenda. One second.
Okay. Yes. Um, so that, this is a stretch of State Street, um, near Michael's house. And it, uh, is a, a long stretch that actually, uh, there are, most of it is not a place where you're able to park anyway, because there are, uh, numerous driveways, um, or exposed to an intersection. Um, so the, the net loss of parking here, uh, is just one, one possible space. Um, you know, yeah, here we can see the map. Um, it clarifies that, uh, the, the plate, the one place along here that is permissible to park, and it helps, uh, with the sightlines for those who are exiting, um, the driveway, uh, from, uh, Michael's house. And, um, by eliminating, uh, one possible place where one could have parked before, but that wasn't, uh, striped. So essentially, we're, we're only losing one parking, uh, space here.
Thank you, Counselor Jarrett. Um, counselors, any discussion on this? Okay. So we'll take them, oh, Mayor?
I, I can just, as a resident of State Street, um, I can just share how hard it is to pull out onto State Street and, um, and when there are cars and that interrupts your sightline, um, it can be really difficult. So I just wanted to give my own personal experience, a little bit farther down State Street, um, that, you know, any, and, and there is a lot of action right around there. And of course, um, we want it to be safe for Michael's house. So, uh, that's just my own anecdotal experience with, uh, similar situations.
Thank you, Counselor Elkins.
And I would just echo as in, uh, my office is right there at the corner of, uh, State and Trumbull. And, uh, we have a front row seat, uh, to many accidents at that intersection, uh, easily once a week. Um, so it's, it's a dicey stretch of road and, and this, I think this will be any, anything that's sort of calms and mitigates and, uh, improve sightlines around there will be welcome and, uh, and, uh, it is necessary.
Thank you, Counselor LaBarge.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to move this ordinance.
Second.
Okay. I think, uh, so the motion made by Counselor LaBarge, seconded by Counselor Moulton would be, um, for approval, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Okay. Laura, can we do a roll call?
Sorry. Just, it's okay. Trying to unmute. Am I unmuted? I am.
Yeah, you are.
Counselor Elkins?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori? Counselor Moulton?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Okay. So that motion passes seven to zero. And that brings us up to item C, 22.165, an ordinance relative to fire lanes. Well, this is on second reading and it's been referred to Legislative Matters. I just want to read, um, this note here on the history. After further review, DPW Director Donna Liscalia stated that the ordinance does not reflect all fire lanes that have been designated. There are 15, not the one being added. She asked Legislative Matters to recommend to council that at table, postpone, continue, whichever word we would like to use, action to allow the sponsor to propose an amendment. Um, so that was requested on September 12th, 2022. Um, so my proposal is that we do table, postpone or continue, um, this discussion. Um, but before we do that, uh, if any counselor wanted to speak to that, I wanted to create space for that too. Okay. So this will return to a future coun- council agenda. Laura, we don't need to vote on that, right?
No.
Okay. Great.
Yeah. Come back.
Right. I promise you'll see this again. Um, so, um, item 13, zoning ordinances, we do not have any. We don't have any information requests, which brings us to item 15, new business. Did any counselors have any new business to discuss tonight? All right. Um, and that brings us to item 17.
Move to adjourn?
I can.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Jarrett and seconded by Counselor LaBarge. There's no discussion on adjournments. We can do a roll call?
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
I heard it very faint. Yes.
Yeah. I think my sound's a little faint for some reason. Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.